Superintendent.
Okay, start again. The school board values and recognizes the importance of the voice of students in the governing of the school district and encourages student engagement as leaders in our school community. The purpose of policy 202.1, School Board Student Representatives, is to establish the roles of school board student representatives. A student from each high school is an advisory, non-voting representative of the school board. This revised policy provides clarity for their role and the prospect of being part of the school board. A minor change was being proposed for this policy, and that is that the student's role is not the same as a regular school board member. For example, school board members participate in negotiations, which is very important. They also participate in closed sessions to talk about strategies and personnel matters. So because of that, we decided to clarify that the school board student representatives do not have the same role as a regular school board member. So administration recommends this change for the policy, and so does the School Board Policy Committee. Back to you, Chair Corman.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any comments or questions? No questions, any comments? Anyone from any of the committees would like to speak on this? No, okay. So all those in favor of approving this resolution for policy 202.1, please say aye. Let's go down in the list here. Director Steiga.
Aye.
Director Starks.
Aye.
Director Sorum.
Aye.
Director Olson.
Aye.
Director Bennett.
Aye.
Director Bibi. Passes, thank you. And next in our agenda, we have the authorized representative for Minnesota Department of Education. If someone, please read the resolution. I don't know if I'm seeing someone here. Would somebody like to read the resolution? Director Bennett.
Sorry. Okay, so this is all the School Board of Independent School District 271 doesn't make Superintendent Fujitaki as the identified official with authority for the Minnesota Department of Education for the Education Identity Access Management System with authority to assign job duties and authorize user access for MBE Secure Systems for Independent School District 271 Bloomington Public Schools.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Starks.
Thank you. Superintendent.
Great, thank you, Chair Corman. The Minnesota Department of Education annually collects a lot of data on a variety of topics. For example, they collect test score data, student information data, and much of this data is secured. Therefore, the state requires that the superintendent be identified by the school board as the person who has authority to access and to delegate the access to this data. This resolution proposes compliance with this state requirement. Back to you, Chair Corman.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki. Any comments or questions from board members? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving this authorization, please say aye. Director Olson.
Aye.
Director Sorum.
Aye.
Director Starks.
Aye.
Director Steiga.
Aye.
Director Bibi.
Aye.
Director Bennett.
Aye.
And Corman, aye. This is a seven to zero vote approving this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next in our agenda, we have return to learn monitoring and update with Superintendent Fujitaki and members of his administration.
Great, thank you, Chair Corman, and school board members. At the August 17th board meeting, I reported that administration would study and monitor COVID health conditions, two changes to federal and state guidelines, and how other districts are implementing hybrid learning model. Please recall, the governor directed all school districts to develop three instructional delivery models: traditional, distance learning, and hybrid. Our objective for this study and monitoring is to gather information to help determine when and how our district moves between models. We can move between the traditional distance learning and hybrid. Tonight, administration will be reporting on our findings and administration's proposed process for developing a recommendation for the school board for instruction delivery model. Please hold your questions till the end of this presentation or presentations. I'm going to now turn it over to Ms. Hannah Hatch, our district's health services supervisor. She will share an update on COVID health conditions and state guideline updates regarding health conditions. Ms. Hatch, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Corman and members of the board. I'm here to provide you a brief update on the COVID-19 numbers in our community and district. So currently, right now, we are basing the plans off of a 14-day case rate per 10,000. That was in the governor's order to watch those numbers and then dictate the model based on that. Looking at our most recent 14-day case rate per 10,000 people, that would put us looking at August 18th through August 31st, and we fall in, the number there is 23 per 10,000 people cases. If you then take that and look at the governor's model that he laid out in the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan, that places us in an all-hybrid model. Please keep in mind that this is the furthest we can go, but you always can choose a more restrictive environment if that is what best fits your district. So currently, we are still maintaining in the all-hybrid model. However, you can always choose a more restrictive environment according to the plan. In talking with Bloomington Public Health this morning and reviewing case data, they are doing case rates more on a more frequent basis, so they're looking at a daily case rate. And today's daily case rate for Bloomington was 13.4 cases, much lower. They're looking at that on a daily basis, so they expect that to be lower, but they're also hopeful that our next case rate will be decreasing coming out soon. That being said, the numbers are trending downwards according to Bloomington Public Health and looking positive. However, they wanted me to send a reminder that because we have not reached the baseline with our case numbers, that number can fluctuate at any time because the virus is still out there and still spreading. The last thing I just want to update you on is over the last few weeks, the Minnesota Department of Health has released several documents, including a decision tree for deciding when students can remain in school or staff can remain in school and when they need to be sent home and for how long. They previously had released one last spring, and this one is just much more detailed and provides a lot more scenarios as to when people could remain in school or need to be sent home and how long they would need to be out for. In addition to that, they've also released numerous training videos to be utilized by school districts in training staff and students in proper hand hygiene and mask wearing and things like that. So we have all those resources in place and are working to utilize those as much as possible in our district currently. Thank you.
Your microphone and my microphone were out, Superintendent.
Sorry. Thank you, Hannah. Thank you for that COVID health development report, and thank you to you and your team for helping the district get prepared for this school year. I take this opportunity to share that on August 17th, we chose to start in distance learning, and since then, our teams have been focused on preparing for distance learning, getting off to a great start. And I'll take this opportunity to thank the principals and the teachers for their great work. Distance learning is off to a great start. That's our reports I'm getting, and we're doing an excellent job. With respect to the second report on monitoring and studying, the changes to federal and state guidelines, there continues to be updates on the federal and state guidelines for schools. However, tonight, we won't be sharing any guidance updates because the changes have not been substantive. They've been in areas of childcare, food service, and those areas. So I'm going to move on to the third topic of monitoring and studying, and I'm going to call on Doc., Assistant Superintendent Dr. Jenna Mitchler, to share our proposed process for developing a recommendation for instructional delivery model movement. Dr. Mitchler, please.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki. Good evening, Chair Corman and members of the board. So I would like to just say that, I'll second what Superintendent Fujitaki has said, is that our leaders and our staff have been putting a lot of time and energy into planning for and executing this distance learning model that we're currently in. And so there's been a lot of really great work that's been happening these last couple of days as we've gotten into the school year. I want to just review with you a timeline for our process as we start to look at our options and our, the viability of a potential hybrid model if we were to shift to a hybrid model, and talk you through what that process looks like. So I'm going to start by sharing my screen just for a moment so that I can share a slide with you that has a timeline on it. So just bear with me one minute as I pull that up. All right, I believe you all can see it now. So what you'll see here is that, of course, starting back in the beginning of this month and really even reaching back into August when we first decided that we would start in distance learning, we've always been monitoring several sets of data. So first would be our COVID-19 data, and Hannah Hatch covered some of that with us just now, but looking at both our county data and our city data. We've also been monitoring our staffing data. So as you know, the reason that we were struggling to find our hybrid model viable was because staffing was just a really big challenge for us. We had found that many of our staff had requested accommodations, and it would have been really a struggle to, and impossible at the time, to staff our hybrid model. So we've committed to continuing to look at that staffing data and reapproach our staff to see how folks are feeling about accommodations and accommodation requests. We've also been looking at other districts' plans, and so we are indeed learning a lot from other districts and what their plans are to implement their hybrid models. I'll say candidly that some of the districts, or perhaps even many, have not actually gotten into their hybrid model yet, but they are still doing that planning and planning to implement, so we can learn from that. And then also taking stock of our family preferences in terms of would families like students to be in-person learning or remote learning? So that's happening and will continue to happen. Of course, tonight is the 14th. We're having this board meeting to report on our timeline and this process. And then moving forward from today to the end of the month, so for the next two weeks, we'll continue to collect this data, and really it will take us some time to continue to collect that data from our staff in terms of accommodation requests. And then we'll also confirm what our families' preferences are with regard to remote learning versus face-to-face learning so that we know what preferences each student has. Moving into the end of the month, on September 28th, we have another board meeting planned, as you all know, and at this point, we believe we can present our findings and a recommendation to the school board as, in terms of if we believe the hybrid model truly is viable for us moving forward. If at that point, we find that the hybrid model is viable, we could move into the implementation phase, which would include preparing our staff, perhaps some additional professional development, time for classroom preparedness, preparing classrooms, operational preparation, including looking at our transportation, making sure students have access to busing that need it, looking at any vacancies we might have that had potentially occurred over the last couple of weeks, trying to find ways to fill those, and other things that would need to be done for us to quickly prepare to make a shift if the board decides to do that after, after we do our data collection that you see here. So this is a general timeline of how we plan to move forward. I'm going to stop sharing my screen for just a moment. And then I'll share a little bit more with you about our process. So now you've seen the timeline. I also want to just acknowledge that there are a lot of folks behind the scenes doing a lot of work to collect and analyze this data. Right now, we've put together something called a guiding change document, which is something that you all are, I'm sure, familiar with. We've used those guiding change documents for budget work that we've done in the past. So you all know that, and for the viewing audience, that we start with what is our current reality. So in this case, we're in distance learning. We flesh out what that actually means. What is our desired result, which of course, I think all of us desire to safely get students and staff back in buildings? And then how do we get there and how do we not get there? So for example, we would not get there by reducing access or equal access to opportunities for students. So we created a guiding change document, and then from there, we started to draft out what metrics will we lean on to know if and when we are ready to shift. So some of those metrics you've seen, I've just highlighted some of them, but I'll review. So these include health and safety data, staffing data, instructional programming data, data around our operations, transportation, things like that, and then confirming our families' preferences with regard to either remote or face-to-face learning. So now that we've articulated our metrics, we have a timeline, and we know how we will guide our change. We have our guiding change document. We are prepared for the next two weeks to really dig into this data and determine whether or not this hybrid model might be viable. And we look forward to coming back to the board with a recommendation in the future. Lastly, I'll just share that we have been looking at what other districts are doing, and there is a couple of key findings I'll just share with you all. Of course, there are many, and we're looking at all of those internally. Two of the key things are that districts have lots of different models for hybrid. And so, you know, we have developed our own hybrid model, and we're looking very closely at how we can implement that specific model. We're finding that in other districts, accommodations range from work-from-home accommodations to other types of accommodations where staff are working in buildings and accommodated in other ways. And then the last thing I'll share is that staffing really has been the main challenge for many of the other districts that I've been personally collaborating with. And so some of you viewing audience board, you may have seen even just over the recent days and weeks, there have been articles, national articles even about the challenges related to staffing within schools. So just know that this is not something unique to Bloomington. It's something that we're seeing in lots of other places as well. That's what I have for you. So with that, I'll hand it back to you, Superintendent Fujitaki.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchler. I'm going to reinforce what Dr. Mitchler shared about what other school districts are doing. Please recall that on August 17th, our district, along with most districts, was scheduled to start on September 8th. Since August 17th, many districts changed their start to distance learning on September 8th. Some have transitioned to hybrid today. Other districts are scheduled to phase in their hybrid over coming weeks. Other districts are distance learning, studying conditions like we are. So there's three modes that are out there. Therefore, we have been monitoring how other districts are planning to transition to hybrid, and we'll continue to do this monitoring, along with seeing how they're faring in their model. And that concludes the presentations. I just want to close also with saying that the teams have been working focused on distance learning, so that's been our focus. We know, we've continued to do our monitoring, and we will now focus on, now that distance learning is off the ground, we're going to focus intensely on this hybrid program. I'll now open that up for questions, Chair Corman.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki, Dr. Mitchler, and Mrs. Hatch. So any questions now from board members? Please raise your hand. I can see, the only one I cannot see on my layout is Director Sorum, so Director Sorum, feel free to speak if you need to. Let's start with Director Olson.
Okay, so hearing that the, the number of cases while they have lowered, they have not gone down to baseline, which means when they talk about a second wave, they were speaking of second wave following after numbers came down to baseline. So this really means we haven't, haven't ended our first wave. When we ask people how they feel about, or when we ask people their preference for going back to hybrid, do we discuss or ask them if they would choose going back to hybrid knowing that there is a possibility, a high possibility that there could be a second wave and that the, and that we would have to do a sudden switch? So I'm wondering if we're asking people that question as well? If they would, you know, if it would be more disruptive to just often change?
Great. Thank you for that question, Director Olson. I'm going to call on our Director of Emergency Response and Community Relations, Rick Kaufman, to help respond to that question. Rick, are you on board?
Good evening, Superintendent Fujitaki, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the question, Director Olson. If I heard you correctly, it's about what information would be shared with the parents. The idea of doing a survey of parents would really be focused on their intent to come back to school or to continue in the flex option, which was prescribed by the governor's order back in July. So the, the purpose of that is to get a sense of, for principals, to know how many parents are going to send their kids back to school and how we will keep them in the flex option. Because we did those surveys well over a month ago, it's important because there's been a lot of shifts and changes to reassess, and that'll be done on an individual school level. Because as Ms. Hatch has shared numerous times, it's not necessarily that we're in the second wave. These are rolling waves that many communities are seeing. In some respects, epidemiologists believe we're still in that first wave, but, so it's hard to assess right now whether we can, with a definitive response is that question. Really, the survey is to focus on whether they're, they will send their children back to school. It's a parent's decision. We don't wish to influence them in any way, shape, or form. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think Director Sorum had his hand up. Director Sorum, and then Director Bennett.
Yes. Thank you. As the senior member of the board, let me just share an observation and then have a question too. For over 40 years, my family has celebrated the first day of school until this year, as so many other things happened 2020, they haven't been. But I'm sure Director Starks can attest to the fact that it was an interesting ritual for her kids and for herself over the years. But, so as we've talked to many people and children, it seems now that distance learning 2.0 is really, the district is actually participating in an online school, because virtually everybody in K-12 is not seeing any live teachers. So it's not what an awful lot of them wanted, and we still get emails and we still get phone calls even now, when are we going to change? So my question is, what are the numbers of students and staff currently at the K-3 grade level and specifically in an elementary K-5? Because if we decide we want to go to hybrid, as so many kindergartners, first graders, and second graders have, have said, and even one of them said, Mama, when are we going to start kindergarten? So it's, it's really tough, but I know that as we've, are going to be getting into the viability, nice word, that we want to do, it's still important that we staff our elementary schools, be it K-1, 2, K-3, whatever it is, and possibly 4 and 5. So I know we've been studying them, and there's some numbers coming up, but that's what is needed.
So to clarify, Director Sorum, your question is how many students are in grades K to 3 total? Is that a question? Well, we have, we average about 700 students per grade level, so times by four grade levels, that'll be 200 students.
K-3?
K-3. K-3.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Bennett?
Yes, well, first of all, I'd just like to say a big thank you to all the staff and teachers and admin for working so hard on all these different learning options and really recreating how we've done education for the past 100 years. And you all have done it in a matter of months, and it's a phenomenal job that everyone's done. And speaking from a parent perspective, who has to get to middle school, week one of distance learning went off very well, extremely well. My kids were engaged pretty much all day, and they were learning, and they were talking to their teachers and their friends in school. So congratulations on a really good rollout of the distance learning 2.0 in week one. And I also want to say welcome back to Ms. Hannah Hatch. Glad to have you back. And my question is kind of following up on Director Olson's question. When, I forgot what my question was going to be. That's funny. Okay, so I'll go to a different question. So I have a question for Dr. Mitchler. When you were talking about accommodations can range from at-home accommodations to other accommodations, do you have any examples of what those other accommodations might be?
Thanks, Director Bennett, for that question. You know, I will say that I am not an expert in human resources, and I'm not sure. I think I saw Mary Burrows here before. And so I might actually divert your question, if that's okay with you, to Mary Burrows, who's Executive Director of Human Resources.
Okay, yeah. Forms of accommodation can be many different things. It can be enhanced personal protective type equipment or supplies, like, you know, a gown could be an example, or other things. And the district is already providing so many things out of hand that it's hard to come up with an accommodation that we aren't actually already providing in many ways. So there's things like that. If there was a high-risk person that needed a barrier put in place, that might be another type of accommodation that could be offered to somebody. Items to make people feel more comfortable in the classroom is really what we're looking at. Other forms of accommodation, of course, we've talked about work from home, if that's even a possibility, if we move to hybrid. And then another form of accommodation, if people do not feel comfortable, would be leave. So that's another form of accommodation.
Okay, thank you. And so Chair Corman, I remembered my original question. Can I ask it now, or would you rather me wait? Okay, so to follow up on Director Olson's question about the parent surveys, so it's probably for Mr. Kaufman. So when the parents that are doing distance learning right now, but if they want to do the flex option, would they stay with their current teachers that are going to be doing hybrid? Or would they be in a, have a separate class with separate teachers? Or is it too early to know that?
Way too early to know that at this point.
Okay, okay, that's fine. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Director Bibi?
I had a question. Since I've met people in the community who have actually pulled out of the district, I'm wondering how many of our students have left the district? And has that reduced our need for classrooms in certain grades? And also wondering about, you know, where are we at with teachers, especially in the elementary? Like Director Sorum, I also am very concerned about our youngest learners. I've been getting some very concerned parents contacting me. I had a call this morning come through that I'm just wondering if the time that we've given for contact between teacher and student is really enough? I had asked that question earlier, and I have not talked to anybody who has had any type of small group afternoon class. And so that concerns me as well. And the assignments that students are given in the elementary have been very minimal. Granted, we're very early into this, but I'm just concerned that there is more that could be given that doesn't seem to be given.
Thank you, Director Bibi, for that question. No questions? First, I'll start off with enrollment. Respond to your enrollment question. We, some students have transferred to private schools, non-public schools, and charter schools. At the same time, we've picked up some enrollment because of the Bloomington Online School. I can share that net information with the board. I don't have it off the top of my head. I can share it tomorrow. So as far as your other question about the elementary program, can I turn it over to Dr. Mitchler to respond, please?
Yes, thank you for that, Superintendent. And thanks for your question and your comments, Director Bibi. You know, I think we have the principals here tonight who might be able to provide a little bit more information. But I, you know, I think that feedback is, it's always, feedback is welcome, right? So good to hear from our community members and stakeholders. One thing I will acknowledge is that for the elementary level here in these first couple of days, we're working on setting up routines and building relationships. And so I do know that the way instruction is being done looks somewhat different for these first couple of days than it will throughout the rest of the year. And I guess perhaps if it's, Don Gremens is here tonight with us, Principal of Hillcrest Elementary. If you wouldn't mind maybe providing a little bit more context for us so that we can just understand a little bit more of what's happening during these first couple of days of school and how perhaps it's different from the rest of the school year, that would be helpful. Don?
Yes, you know, thank you for having me, Superintendent Mr. Pujitaki, and Chair Board, Ms. Corman. So, you know, obviously, it's a unique beginning of the year, going with distance learning 2.0. But we heard feedback from distance learning 1.0 that relationships with teachers is extremely important in developing that trust with the students and families, and also sticking with how we begin the school year. And, you know, many families don't know, and the public don't know, is that we call, what's called the first 20 days of the school year. And what that is, is developing expectations, going over rules and what might happen in small group virtual learning. Now we have to adapt what we would do in the classroom to what is done virtually. And as you know, we have to, number one thing is to make sure that students and families are hooked up technologically. So that first week, for example, at Hillcrest, I'll share, we had a total of four absences total. So that, for me, is just amazing job district-wide with our digital learning team, our tech support team, our teachers, making sure that the devices are in the hands of families and that they can log in and have their passwords and login information so they're set to learn. So again, these first 20 days is about developing, I'll recap, developing relationships, trust between students and families, and making sure the students know how to log in. And I know at Hillcrest, we're making sure that our K-1 students are able to pin their individual student schedules to their homepage on their tablets. And grades 2 through 5. One of the main things today was to make sure all students could bookmark their individual student schedules to their Chromebooks. So if they aren't at home, and no matter where they are, they can click on those individual student schedules and get the meeting links and all of that and all set, no matter where they are, whether if it's at home with their family, or if they're at Grandma's and Grandpa's house, or if they're at childcare. So that's our number, that's been our number one priority last week. And as of this week, same thing is going. Making sure we have those expectations, procedures in place for our students.
Thank you, Gremens. Director Bibi, did we respond to your questions? Baby, you're muted.
That's one school that I'm not, that's not the school where these kids are from. So I'm not sure what's happening across the board consistently because that's not what the parents are sharing with me has happened in their classrooms.
And perhaps Director Bibi could communicate directly with the Superintendent on specifics of that specific school?
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
Great question, Chairman Corman, thank you.
Thank you.
Good for you, Director Bibi.
Thank you.
May I project as Dr. Bibi?
And that is, we have been, as principals at the elementary level, we communicate the same message to our staff, our planning. So we're all on the same page, and it's happening at all 10 elementary schools.
Thank you. Yeah, it's important to have information, you know, as we receive feedback, that we share it with the administration as well. Okay, Director Starks, do you have a question?
I do. Am I allowed, I have two follow-up questions to two different questions that have been asked already. Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So my first is a follow-up to Director Sorum's question about the youngest learners. So I don't know who could answer this for us. But when you're talking about whether or not we go back to school in a hybrid model, is it an all K-12 option only? Or are you looking into a potential, we have just our kindergarten through second grade comeback in hybrid, and everybody else stays in distance learning? Or we do a rollout where it's, you know, youngest learners first, older learners come back later? So I just am curious as to how those decisions or conversations are going. So that's part, that's part one.
I'll respond to that. Great question, Director Starks. The answer is yes, we're looking at all options right now.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, this is kind of a follow-up to what Beth was asking and what Mr. G, as he's called at Hillcrest, was responding to. When we talk about the first 20 days and the students getting to know their teachers and getting to know their classmates, et cetera, if we look at going to a hybrid model, and there's potentially some staffing shifting, so either a staff member decides to take a leave of absence instead of going back into the classroom, or some other changes like that happen, is the potential that a student who's made a relationship with their third-grade teacher in going back to a hybrid model will no longer have that third-grade teacher? Or would maybe have different classmates that they would have in a hybrid model? And if so, would we as parents? And would we as school board members have to decide if our children are going back to hybrid? Or we'd have to vote on a hybrid model before we know about those changes?
Great. I'll ask Dr. Mitchler again to respond, please.
Yes, Director Starks, thanks for that question. And I think you bring up a really good point, is we want to be very clear with our families to let them know what it will look like if we move into a hybrid model. Right now, you had mentioned at the earlier grades, as I work with the elementary principals, we really are looking at keeping as many students as possible with their current teachers if we were to shift to a hybrid model. What I will say is that, of course, because lots of things are in flux here, right? We're trying to do the best we can to keep our priorities in mind. We may find that if we shift to a hybrid model, that some students may see different classroom teachers. And so we'll try to be very clear about that when we send out those follow-up surveys to confirm student family preferences for either the remote, the flex option, or the hybrid face-to-face option. Just being clear that it is definitely a possibility that a student may have a new teacher if we move to hybrid. And so that's something that we are looking at. But do know, we would do the best, the absolute best we could to keep students with the teachers that they currently have, because we recognize how important relationships are. We do, we really know that.
Thank you. Very important point. Director Steigaf, do you have a question?
I didn't even get my hand raised, thank you. I do have a question. I do have a question. You already read my mind, so thank you. My question is also related to all this. Hannah Hatch said in her report, I think, that there's been new guidelines from the state regarding like when we would have to switch from, you know, like if someone in the room tested positive or whatever, whatever those rules are. So one of my questions is, it seems like we're getting that question asked by parents is, how do we make those decisions? How do we decide that? And I'm not sure they understand that that guidance comes from the state. So is that available? Can we make that link available so parents also can read that guideline? And so they understand, you know, that it's not just a decision that we just, you know, decide on Monday that that's how we're going to do it? That we have guidelines from the state that we need to follow?
Thank you, Director Steigaf. The state did put out a decision tree. I'm not going to go over the decision tree, but we can share it with you. I'll turn it over to Hannah Hatch to respond to your question. Hannah?
Yeah, thank you for that question. That's a great question. So I just want to clarify, the guidance that came out as to the model that we fall in is based on the case rate, which I presented you with at 23 currently. So that falls in a hybrid learning setting currently, according to the governor or state plan. That has not changed since the original school plans were rolled out. That has stayed the same, and we just continue to watch the case data as to where we fall. And again, we fall in the hybrid. However, every district can choose a more restrictive setting. We just couldn't go less restrictive in those models. The decision tree that was released by the Department of Health is a quite detailed tree that determines when staff or students would need to go home if they were ill or experiencing symptoms or had exposure, and how long they would need to stay out for. So I certainly can share that with you. It's a public document. If you go to the Minnesota Department of Health website, you can find it on there and read through it. And it kind of walks through, you know, how we would make the decision as to who can be in classes and who needs to be sent home. The state has been clear, though. Once they go to hybrid, they want us to make every effort to stay in that model as much as possible for consistency.
So I have, can I follow up? Sorry, Director. I have seen the decision tree, but what I really wanted to know is, can we make a link to that for our parents? Because that seems to be a lot of questions that they're asking of us, is how are we deciding this? So I was hoping that that would help parents understand how that decision is made and that we need to follow the guidelines that they put in the decision tree. That makes sense?
Director Steigaf, yes, it does, and we will create that link for parents.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Mitchler, during your presentation, you did mention we were talking about the guiding change document. You were talking about lots of people behind the scenes. Could you give us a little bit more of an idea of who these people are?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So I guess I'll just maybe go back even a little bit further in time. Is back into the summer, we had a group of folks who had been coming together to ideate, come up with potential solutions to some really big, complex problems that we were, or challenges, maybe I would say, that we were facing as we started to build out our hybrid model. And so, you know, folks involved in that process through the summer and working up here into the, into the start of the school year were leaders of our buildings, site leaders, principals, teachers, that we had paraprofessional representatives, we had clerical representatives in that group. And so, you know, it was a very vast...
Yep, I'm here. I'm Megan Wilrett, Principal at Valley View Middle School. I had a feeling I was going to be asked this question tonight about the challenges, and I was really ready to provide a really long list of challenges as the spring was really challenging. And I, and I kind of figured, oh, we'll probably see a lot of those same challenges here in the fall. And I honestly don't have a list. I've talked to a number of teachers. I've talked to a lot of parents. I've received a ton of emails from parents, more than I ever have, just with the start of a school year, about how well we have rolled out Distance Learning 2.0. I really, really believe that we listen to our constituents, our parents, our teachers about what didn't go well and what we needed more as far as supporting, you know, an 11-year-old who's making a transition to middle school. And an eighth grader who is in their final years of middle school and what they need and making sure that we differentiate for those students. Our attendance is up over 90%, and we have a synchronous schedule all day long. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Our students, I saw Nikita this morning in her Google Meet, Bennett, and got to say good morning to her, but they start at 8:15 in their advisory class, and they are making connections with the exact same teacher every day, and that teacher has become their support person. So when they can't find something or they don't know a question, they go to that person. It kind of becomes like a quasi-case management, if you, if you will. So they start off every day, they're getting to know that advisor, and that advisor stays on until they find their first period of class to make sure that all the links are working and they're on there in case they need to come back. Kids are finding out where they need to go, even our sixth graders. And I think that was the class that we were most concerned about. Right now, we don't have a ton of challenges. We just need to figure out, because kids aren't physically there, but it's the same thing we need to do when kids are face-to-face, is figure out, kids who don't show up for school, are they still enrolled with us? Is there a transportation issue? Do they, do they need something? And so that's the data that we're digging into this week, all three middle schools, and just kind of cleaning up, where are the kids that we haven't seen yet? It's no different than face-to-face. I was prepared to have my phone ringing off the hook on Tuesday morning, and it's really, it's really been off to a great start. I'm very impressed.
Thank you, Megan. I'll call upon Kennedy High School Principal Akram Osman, and I'm calling upon him because he's coming in with fresh eyes. He just joined the district this year. So Akram, are you on board?
Yes, absolutely. Superintendent Fujitaki, Board Chair Corbin, school board members. It's been, it's been a really exciting start to the school year. You know, I continue to talk to the staff at Kennedy High School about, you know, capitalize on this opportunity because students ended the school year in a similar fashion. So now we, we just enter this school year with the mindset of just improving it and ensuring that each day, whatever we learn, we are just along the way to ensure that our students have the supports and information that we need, and that our staff are leading on each other to ensure that those supports and the learning is happening at high levels. At the high school level, and Jason can also share on this, we've got three synchronous sessions happening on a daily basis, and then the rest of the course is happening asynchronously, and those courses are rotating, you know, day to day. So, and we've shared, we've talked about the schedule before. There aren't many challenges up to this point. We're communicating to our families and, you know, a lot of the feedback I'm receiving has been very positive, but, you know, I really, really appreciate that the start, you know, this start in distance learning, because we're starting where the students left off, and we're just building on those routines and ensuring that we provide the students the support that they need.
Thank you, Principal Osman. I'm going to call in Dr. Jenna Mitchell to call in a elementary principal, please.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. And I think I will, if Andrew Wilkins is on the call, I'm going to ask Andrew Wilkins to share because he is the administrator for both Bloomington Online School Elementary and also, of course, is the principal of Washburn Elementary. Andrew?
Thank you, Superintendent, Dr. Mitchell, Chair Corbin, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. You know, I kind of echo a lot of what we've heard already. There weren't a lot of challenges starting the school year because we learned from Distance Learning 1.0, what parents were expecting, what students were expecting, what staff would be expecting. A great example of this is with our technology. As you can imagine, sending a device home with a kindergartner that's more than likely had a device at home that they've played with, but sending a Chromebook tablet home with them, it's going to be their main mode of instruction for the next X amount of weeks, can be a little bit daunting. So technology did, the department did a fabulous job of getting those out to those families and also providing those families with information to help them and their child get up to speed with those devices and get them logged on. And as we heard earlier, attendance was great across the board, and that probably if you had predicted that, you wouldn't have thought that we'd be 90-plus percent for attendance, especially with those youngest learners, but, but we were. We have had a few challenges along the way with technology, as, as you can expect when thousands of devices are rolled out. But again, the tech team was in place to provide that support at sites and also through their tech hotline. So I think some of the challenges that came up, we had systems in place to support them because we knew based on past experience, what we would need to do and what we might encounter. You know, as Megan alluded to as well, you know, we have some students that didn't show up or didn't pick up supplies. Last week, you know, I personally drove to some homes delivering supplies. I know other principals did that as well. And so that's another one of the supports that we put in place, just kind of a hands-on deck, and we, we do what we need to do to make education work for all the students in Bloomington Public Schools. So, and again, the online, Bloomington Online School, the brick-and-mortar schools such as Washburn, you know, the experiences were the same across the board, I would say.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Chair Corbin, back to you.
Thank you. I believe that Principal Anderson was raising his hand too, but I was not able to see him.
Yes, and thank you. I just wanted to echo before the question really was around what supports have the teachers had to be successful. I agree with, with Principal Osman and everyone else that we are off to a very, very strong start. I think we are delivering what we said we would deliver to teachers. But I do think a special shout-out to the tech specialists at all the levels have really carried a lot of weight, getting, helping support teachers to get all their platforms up and running, and that smooth tech transition has been and will continue to be critical to our success. So they definitely deserve a virtual round of applause. That was all I was going to say. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you all, principals, and thanks so much to all the teachers who have been doing this work for the last weeks, months. But especially this past week, as you start establishing those very important relationships with our kids and our families. I know that every little thing that it's been done through those meets takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, and for our kids, it really takes time. So it's really hard to start getting into the depths of curriculum if you don't have those little systems figured out from the very beginning. And so I think that's very important, at the same time as you develop those relationships and this, this trust with your
I don't know if there are copies of this. I don't know if Rick and his group have done anything with it, but to have some of these, this preparedness plan, COVID-19 preparedness plan, that we developed back when we were talking about hybrid, about the school buildings, transportation, ventilation systems, all of those types of questions that were asked before have been really put well in this plan. And I think that that, if not available, should be made available so that the schools have a copy of it, the principals have a copy of it, and even if family members or public wants to have one. I'll pay for part of it, but not all of it.
Thank you, Director Sorm. Rick Kaufman, could you be sharing an update on how we're sharing that information, please?
Yes, thank you, Director Sorm. So the COVID-19 Preparedness Plan is for all BPS employees. It is a requirement of MDH and MDE to provide the information that you see in there. We did it in a format that allows us to make updates. Ms. Hatch, we share with you that we went through significant training last week on the decision tree. And with that, an update to the symptoms that, just to give you an example, the symptoms that are also revised, are less common or more common, which drives the decision-making in terms of when person should be quarantined or isolation, whether confirmed or, or have, have been exposed to it. So every employee has received a copy of that. Every employee, it's expected, should be reviewing that, and we provide those updates, which we did just late last week. We will continue to keep providing updates as the information, the fluid information becomes available. We did create a companion piece for parents. It's called the Return to Learn Guide. It is more directed towards parents. Both of these documents are on the website. The Return to Learn Guide is also, will go through revisions and updates, regardless of what learning model that we are in. It's driven largely by the updated guidance we received from the state, from the Department of Health, as well as the Department of Education.
Thank you. Any other additional questions? Anyone else or members?
Can you not see me?
No, I cannot see you, Director Bennett. Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you, principals, for sharing what you're seeing and hearing. I noticed on the call, we had some early learning teachers that were on the call, some of my, my children's former teachers, a long, long time ago. So I was wondering if we could get a perspective from early learner's side of things, if there's someone that can speak to that?
Great question. I'll call upon Executive Director Jake Winchell, who's our Community Education Director, to handle that question. Jake?
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki. Good evening, board members, Chair Corbin. I did invite our coordinators of ECFE and Early Childhood Preschool with us here tonight, so they are with us and on, and they're able to speak to what's been happening in ECFE and in preschool so far. So Galen, if you want to kick this off for us, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. And yes, Tom, I did get to teach your kids. I was very fortunate. So I would say for preschool, things are kicking off, we're off to a really good start. At this point, we have approximately 272 students enrolled in preschool. That number is changing every day, so that might not be actually completely accurate. We have had supply pickup days. From what I'm hearing from teachers, our attendance has been really good as well. Many families have been logging in. I've seen many videos of kids interacting with our group times and with our activities, which is really fun to see. We as well in preschool are focusing on that relationship piece and that connection piece. And in the next couple of weeks, we will do Google Meets actually with the students. We had kind of meet the family Google Meets the beginning of the month here, but we will be moving into those with the kids as well. And again, we have, with our supply pickup, we also had device pickup. So that has been nice, which we didn't, weren't able to offer in the spring. We were able to offer that now in the fall. So that has been really nice to get more families hooked up with devices.
Thank you.
Thanks, Galen. And I also do have Deborah with us tonight to speak with ECFE, if she's still with us.
Hi there. Thank you so much. And actually, Tom, I remember being your teacher as a parent educator. So this is really exciting to, to be a part of this process. And so with ECFE, Early Childhood Family Ed, we're having a slow start, but we predicted that we, you know, families have a lot to do right now. But what we did hear from families last spring is that the parents wanted to talk to each other. They wanted to see each other. So we have started our regular classes in Google Meet. Our normal classes are an hour and 45 minutes. We just felt that was way too long. So we have it for just an hour. The early childhood teacher greets all the children, sings, you know, a welcome song, does a little activity, and eventually we will get to, you know, find something green in your, your, where you live and doing activities. And then we have a short, at the max, 30 minutes, parent education. What we tell parents, safety is first. Watch your child be there. So that's what started this last week. We heard some really good feedback. We had a mom last spring who joined one of our classes. She was pregnant. She hadn't had her baby yet. Now she has her baby, and she has gotten her sister to sign up, who is pregnant and going to have a baby in November. And actually, she sent a note because they got their, their little bag for learning, and her daughter loves her shaker bottle. So we're just, we're hearing really good news. What we've done is we wanted to start slow. We believe that parents need to take care of the kids first, get them in school, get them settled, all of that. So we just started our regular ECFE classes. What we're planning to do, because our classes will be in our, our early childhood teachers and our parent educators will have a little extra time. So what we're going to do is start some evening classes. And what, we have one started on Wednesday. It's at 8:00 PM, from 8:00 to 8:30. And actually, to support our staff, one of our parent educators is half-time. Her children are home doing distance learning. So she was so excited that she can be with her children and help them with their schooling during the day and then teach a parent ed class. And so we're going to start out slow. We're adding more parent ed classes. We're going to have what we We're going to have what we call drop-in office time with a parent educator. That will be done in an afternoon. We're going to be doing that both in English and in Spanish. Then we're going to have a drop-in discussion on discipline. Parent educator could, or I mean, a parent can say, oh, I want to talk to a parent educator. I've got some discipline issues. We're going to be doing drop-in little story times, start early childhood teachers, you know, maybe after lunchtime, maybe 10 minutes if that. A song, a story, and we're doing a lot of stories like on flipgrid and using that. So we wanted to start slow. Parents are really focused on their kids, but I know once they get settled, they're going to be saying, wait a minute. I need a parent educator. I need to talk to other parents. So what we will be, what we will be doing is gradually adding more programming. Okay? Any other questions?
Nice. Thank you. It sounds like fun. So at this point, I'm going to ask board members, because you have completely disappeared from my screen, to please turn your microphone on and just say your name so that you show up again.
Okay. This is Maya. I just want to thank Tom for asking about the early childhood program because that was really encouraging to hear from them. Thank you.
Okay. And Beth Beebe's back and I just want to thank everybody who's been working so hard.
Don Stigga, I actually, after you get everybody back up on the screen, I have a question for early childhood, but I wait to get.
Go ahead Director Stigga. You can ask a question now. And then I don't see Director Stark, so Director Stark, if you have a question, please, after Director Stigga, just go ahead and ask your question.
Okay. So I wanted to know, are we still doing like screenings? Are those still happening at all? And then this is maybe more related to special ed, so I don't know if Jennifer's on here too, but are we also still doing, like you said, assessments eval for kids that are needing early childhood special education, early intervention? Is that still happening? And can you describe how that might be happening differently? If someone can, then what it used to look like?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's start off. Jake, could you field that question, please?
Sure. Great question. I can answer the question about screen. So they did lighten up some of the restrictions on screenings. It did kind of come to a halt last spring where we couldn't do some of the evaluations virtually. Now this year, they are allowing some of that stuff to be done, both virtually and with a parent at home. So I could speak to that a little bit. So we have restarted screening a little bit. It's not at full capacity yet, but it is something that we have continued to start to ramp back up.
Superintendent Fujitaki, I can answer the question about special education.
Go ahead.
Yes, sure. Thank you for the question. And we have been working through the summer, providing services for evaluation for special education, both our early childhood, all the way through reevaluation through our 12th grade. And we will continue to provide those services this fall. We've continued to. We are working out how to do some of that face-to-face. The summer, we brought students in to do some of the evaluation face-to-face when it applied or when it worked for our families to come in. And we're continuing to do that going into this fall of the year, is bringing students when it makes sense to come in face-to-face. We are working with our transportation department to set up transportation for students to come and get returned home after an evaluation, setting up the screening process for when students come in to look at the health screening component, just to make sure everybody is ready for the evaluation component of it, and setting it up with our staff so that they have a couple of different techniques that we're utilizing, a Plexi glass barrier or whatever it needs to be in place for a face-to-face evaluation. Those will continue through this fall and we will have our transportation up and going for families that need that within, actually within the week. I imagine that will be up and going.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it's really great to hear that we're able to do that because we all know that early intervention is probably our children's greatest chance for success. So I'm glad we're able to pull that off. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Stark, I'm not sure if you were raising your hand too?
I was. So I have another process question about returning to school, in-person school. So when Ms. Hatch talked about the numbers in Bloomington versus Hennepin County and that the numbers are trending downward, we're close to that 20 threshold. So if we go down to a 19 or an 18, according to the state guidelines, we could do full in-person elementary school. So my question is, is that on the table at all as these conversations are happening, or are we just stopping at the hybrid option for our K-12?
Thank you for that question. I'll respond this way. This whole process here is to inform the board and the public that we are developing a movement model because we have three instructional delivery models. And we're going to, this process that we're developing is going to be driven by our values, our metrics and data. So we're going to be determining how we move between the three instructional delivery models. And we're going to set up a process that can be consistent and dependent upon by the board and the public. So that's the process. So it's not just moving from distance learning to hybrid, but also moving from hybrid possibly to traditional, and traditional back down to hybrid. So this movement model that Dr. McRae talked about will guide us in how we make that movement and transition. Does that answer your question, Director Stark?
Yep.
Great.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think everybody got a chance to the second round. Okay. Director Stark, or Director Beebe. Okay. Go ahead.
Well, so I, one more question and I'm, I'm going to try to keep these questions down. If we go to hybrid, are we going back to the traditional start times and end times? Or will be the, you know, because our distance learning start times and end times are much shorter. So just from, I'm thinking parent and community perspective, are we reverting back to our traditional start and end times or will that look different?
I don't think we have that, we made that determination yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Beebe?
I was just wondering how things were going in the community with the delivery of meals to families and their students in this process.
Great. Thanks for that question, Director Beebe. While we're in distance learning, at four of our sites, Jefferson, Kennedy, Normandale Hills and Valley View Middle School, our food service department is providing a meal program. It runs from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's only on Mondays and Thursdays. All right. If you want more information, you can visit our website. You get more information about how you qualify and what's to be expected from parents and students picking up meals. Does that answer your question, Director Beebe?
Director Beebe, your microphone.
Sorry about that. I was just wondering what the participation is and how that's going? If there've been any glitches on that side or if it's going smoothly?
For the program, it's running really well. Participation is a little down, but it was expected it would be down.
Thank you. Anything else? Saying no. Thank you everyone. And thank you Superintendent Fujitaki. We appreciate all this information tonight.
Great.
And we will stay in touch with you, individual board members. If you have any questions, please reach out to the administration in the following days.
Thank you.
Okay, following our agenda here, our next item is the professional negotiations update. And I would like to call upon Mrs. Mayber, Director of Human Resources.
Okay Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the board. I just wanted to give a brief update on the peer professional negotiations and where things are at with that unit. The district and unit negotiation team met three times in mediation. The last time was June 22nd of this year. At the end of that mediation session, the district did present their last best final offer to the unit that included increases in pay and benefits. No other sessions are scheduled at this time.
Thank you for the update. And just a reminder that because this type of conversation by law belongs to the negotiation table, we should not ask or make any comments at this time. Okay? Thank you. Okay. And then in our agenda, then now we are up to board member reports. Would someone like to give a report? I don't think we have any right now. Maybe. Director Beebe?
Well, I'm the Chair of the Bloomington Student Advisory Council and Committee. And we were with two students who will be our student board representatives. And their names are Tristan Pai and Juma Wada, very conscientious and I think, and how should I say, achieving students at this time. And they were just such a delight to meet with today. And I think you as a board and those that work with them and see them in our board meetings will really enjoy them. So I think we're up for a very good year. And I want to do a shout out to my colleagues, Heather Stark and Maya Olson also on the committee, who have worked with me and also Deb Bunkholt, who works closely with the students to come up with just a real foundation of what they can expect from us and what we expect from them. And they're just so cordial and I appreciate the fact that it's not dependent on one person, but that we together can make a difference. And it turned out really well. So it's a good team. It's going to be a good year.
Thank you. Yeah, we're very excited and looking forward to having our new student representatives for the board to join us next week. Director Olson?
Yes, we had a meeting and students were, they left excited. They both said that they were excited to become student representatives. So I thought that was encouraging and I look forward to working with them. I think we're going to have a good year as well. Thank you for running that meeting, Director Beebe. So I attended a virtual screening of pushout. Thanks to a couple of teachers had sent out an invite, Jenny Bergland, a teacher at OGMOS. And then also I noticed Sarah Weber was also in attendance from KHS. And I'm sorry if I missed anybody else because there were a lot of people in attendance. And that was a pushout, was it, included a discussion panel from Teach for America, Twin Cities, WOMEN, it's W-O and then M-N for Minnesota, ACT. An ACT, the acronym stands for Advocate, Collaborate, Transform. And with Girls on the Run. And the discussion was focused on specifically black girls feeling pushed out of education and what we can, what actions we can take to elevate black girls to achieve educational equity. And according to the discussion panel, they considered a public health crisis. And so it was very interesting. I learned a lot. I learned that one of the, or that 7% of teachers in the nation are black. And that Makisha of Makisha Nation, an executive director of Teach for America, Twin Cities has helped double the number of students aspiring to be educators. And she leads efforts to grow, develop and sustain our diverse leadership pipeline. So I thought that was really interesting. And I know I could go on. I learned so much, but I would like to bring up the fact that Girls on the Run is a girls empowerment program, which encourages the development of self-respect and healthy lifestyles. And they're able to offer this, it's very interactive, but it's running outside and they're able to offer this COVID-free, you know, during COVID. So I just thought that that was a wonderful program that I would like to research more. Thank you.
Thank you Director Olson. Anyone else? Well, thank you. Once again, thank you to our committee for working together and communicating with that new student representative. Okay. Anyone else? Any other reports? I cannot see Director Bennett, so if you have anything, please let me know.
Oh, no, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we go now to superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you Chair Corman. How was your missus and I sharing this during the presentation? So I'll take this time to talk about this. I want to reaffirm our commitment to the public and to the parents to bring students back in school and to work hard to get there. Commitment we're giving. And I'm going to, the second thing is I want to turn over my time over to Rick Kaufman to talk about the COVID testing event that he led. Rick?
Thank you Superintendent Fujitaki. There were a lot of people involved in the whole planning of this. And so tremendous amount of effort went into the work with Bloomington Public Health, our partners at MDH, along with Parent Chash, Serge Amaki with the State Emergency Operations Center. So as you all know, a couple of weeks ago, it'll be two weeks tomorrow, that we hosted at Kennedy High School, a community-wide testing event. As it turns out, it's been the largest community testing event in the state to date. With a target of 2,000 persons to be tested, we tested 1,996 individuals over that seven hours a day. The outcome for Bloomington specific, 596 individuals were tested. That's about 43% of those that participated. With the help of Bloomington Public Health, we were able to break down the targeted groups because our Office of Educational Equity and members of Dino Wade Arlie's team and others, we were able to target our BIPOC community. That is, in most communities, the group that is underrepresented in terms of testing, but results are much higher, disproportionately higher. So at the end of the day, because Bloomington Public Health serves Bloomington, Edine Ridgefield, they were 34% of our BIPOC community overall in those three communities, but 41% in Bloomington were members of our BIPOC community. So a tremendous output by our Office of Educational Equity and Community Relations Department resulted in a, it turned out that we were very pleased by. So also interesting, 29 individuals or 2.4% tested positive as a result of that. That was much lower than what we're seeing in other communities. But again, the number of individual, percentage of persons that tested positive in our BIPOC community was 5.3% compared to just under half a percent of the white population. So overall, a great testing event, great work, great teamwork partnership with all those that we mentioned.
Thank you, Rick. That concludes my report, Chair Corman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cattman, for sharing that information with us tonight. Okay, so for other business, I do have to read once again the recognition of the public statement because I understand there was a technical situation where we lost sound for a few seconds, for a couple of minutes. So I have to read it again. Recognition of the public. Tonight, there is no public recognition. However, in the interest of open communications, on Monday, September 28th, our next regularly scheduled school board meeting, we will initiate a new process to provide an opportunity for Bloomington residents to address the school board. Next week, the district will provide information and a link for residents, district staff, students and parents to submit a comment to the school board. Submitted comments might be read during the recognition of the public portion of our regular meetings only. Study sessions are excluded. Study sessions are excluded. Please look for more information next week on the district webpage and through our other communication channels. Thank you. Is there any other business? No, hearing none. We're coming to the end of our meeting here. So we're going into adjournment now. Would somebody like to move adjourning of the meeting?
Some move.
There are second?
Second, Beebe.
Okay, very good. Moved by Director Bennett, and then second by Director Beebe. All those in favor adjourning this meeting, please say aye. Director Beebe?
Aye.
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Saram?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steigav?
She left the meeting.
She left the meeting? Okay. And then Corman, aye. That is six votes, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.